There we go. Okay, so I'll call this meeting to order. We don't have any minutes to go over. Public speed time, if anybody here has anything that is not on our agenda tonight. This is the time for that. But if you're here for zoning, the over quota license or food trucks. In the right place. So it seems like we have a lot of people here for zoning, but you said that we... There's people that are waiting to come down?
There are people who are waiting, correct.
Okay, so I guess, you guys want to talk about the over quota license?
Sure.
First?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I believe we were charged with coming up with the ratio.
Sounds like it from the last meeting.
The last consensus was a six to two.
Yep.
So I don't know how you guys feel about that?
Well, I mean, I expressed at the meeting that I was kind of in agreement with Counselor Hagan that keeping it with four to four, we really are, through that process, encouraging the creativeness or the uniqueness of the applicants for looking at restaurateurs or other purveyors that had a need for alcohol versus just saying, you know, we're looking at having bars that are going to have, you know, be able to serve hard alcohol. You know, so it really is looking at the beer and wine, but I'm completely comfortable on a six and two, under the consideration that we probably will be facing with three, at least three vendors who are going to want to upgrade and turn back in their beer and wine, which in turn will create three additional beer and wine licenses. So I'm fine with six and two.
Okay. What do you think?
I feel that I would like to... I would really like to see if the rumors about who would be trying to get a liquor license, if there's any merit to that assumption, because we're basing that entire decision of six and two on the likelihood that businesses that currently have a wine and liquor license would prefer to upgrade. So I would like to have some basis for that assumption and this decision, as a result of that assumption, be merited.
All right. Were you planning on contacting them personally?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, yeah.
I mean, it sounded like Counselor Hayes was going to look for input on that too and reach out to those.
Right, and I did tell her about tonight's meeting. And it was, you know, just as far as, you know, disclosure. It was, before our first meeting, it was, she put out a Facebook post asking for people to come and give input. Nobody came.
Yep.
And then at our last meeting, she put again another one. And so, and I'm not sure if people would have that information offhand, you know, without, until, so...
That's what I'm saying, you'd really have to contact the
And they might work out.
Beer and wine vendors and say, would you be interested in upgrading to a full liquor license if it became available?
So, I mean, and honestly, I think four and four is fine. I think two and six is fine. I think five and three is fine. You know, I think that's gonna, you know, probably end up coming down to somebody's whim when it comes to amendments. But, you know, I think it makes sense for us to kind of, in fore and forth, what we originally came up with, because we thought that was balanced and...
Right.
So...
I guess technically, since I'm on the committee, Joe McCoy, the president of City Council, so technically I'm on everyone's committee. I just wanted to make a comment about what Tamara said, that I'm wondering if, I don't know if all those breweries are poor licenses, so what may become available is poor licenses versus beer and wine licenses?
Well, I know that the breweries right now, they have a brewer's pour license, which is a specific license for farmer brewers.
So if they did go upgrade, the licenses that are available are not...
So I don't think those would not become available. In order to get that, you would have to be a farmer brewer.
Okay, right. And then from the other perspective, I would like to say, I almost said at the last City Council meeting, I'm... Apologies for the committee, because you had three public meetings, this is number four.
Yeah.
Considering all the comment that was made, that I am the only city councilor here, I don't think isn't great. So I apologize for the lack of the rest of the councils showing up and commend you on your work.
Okay, thanks. So, you know, so I think that basically is the only piece. I know that there was a request for, for what licenses were out there, so I have that.
I need to back up for the notes for a second.
Sure.
Joe, you just brought up the whole notion that the breweries have brewers farm license, a pour license right now. And if I'm hearing what you said right, to upgrade to a full license would not just be a simple over quota?
No, no, I'm saying, it would be a simple over quota, but I thought you were saying that we would have three more beer and wine licenses available, but these are special licenses, so if only a unique facility could apply.
For only for brewers?
Uh-huh.
So those ones would not come back onto the market?
Unless...
Unless it's brewery.
Right.
But I think those are, those are a special type of license that are above and beyond our quota anyway.
But I feel like those licenses, particularly with Fort Hill, there has been so much tension with Fort Hill to not ask at all if that's their intention. I understand that it's a, you know, it's a market, and they have the right to apply for it just like anybody else, but if this is not even part of their plan at all, there's been so much question about that, that I would feel more comfortable making that final decision, knowing whether or not if that's just rumor that, oh, this could happen, or if this is something that's being considered.
So completely excluding those?
Yeah.
Who you'd be looking to contact, then would be Village Pizza, the East Hampton Diner, La Casita, and Luthiers.
Right.
I mean, there we have four wine malt licenses, which very well could be upgraded if they were interested. And it was my understanding from the last meeting that at least La Casita was interested in upgrading theirs. And again, I don't know if whether or not Luthiers has expressed interest, but, you know, those would be the four that potentially could upgrade.
And I would venture to guess that it's unlikely that, I mean, I wouldn't speak for Fort Hill, but because of the, you know, I've been attending the planning board meetings and the DBA meetings and pretty religiously, they're not looking. They're not looking to have a bar there. They just want to be able to continue to...
They're a brewer, that's what they do.
They want to continue to be able to, you know, introduce people to their beer in a pour room. That's what they want. As far as the other breweries, I don't know about that.
Okay.
But I assume Assuming the assumption most breweries...
That they would want people to drink their beer.
Yeah.
As opposed to other things.
Well, that was my, that was my thought too, but just knowing that it's been such a contentious area, so that should not be considered and have that part of the discussion. It's just, I think, to be very cautious.
So maybe, maybe if you guys want to just table this for now? And Jan's out.
My only concern with that though, again, is we continue to probably hear it.
We did. Well, I was thinking we could go back and revisit tonight.
Oh, okay, sure. Okay, I, we used it a while.
No, just for tonight, I mean, just for...
But I'm also not going to be there for the next City Council, Council meeting, which is a federal concern.
Right. So we'll revisit this, and we can open it now that we have everybody here.
Okay.
We can... No, we didn't revisit it, we just tabled it.
For now.
To do something, and we'll revisit.
Oh, you're going to redo it, tonight?
Tonight. We're not in a rush. Did music stop?
No.
And I got it, nobody else hears.
Okay, so what we have is, we have the planning board's recommendation to adopt the modified zoning map. And there have been some developments since then, so, and I see that Bernie's here, I know that this was one of the things that kind of developed since the planning board closed theirs and ours, since we haven't voted as a committee. Still have some latitude. So if you want to just let us know why you're here, what's going, and your name for us for the record as well.
My name's Thomas Vincent, I'm attorney for North Hampton, and I'm here to speak for Bernie to come in, would welcome the opportunity.
You're welcome to, you have the floor.
Already?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Well, if I may stand, is that all right?
Absolutely.
I have some maps to start with, that's all. What I'd like to do, since I could, there are only three maps here, the walking tour. And I see that Jessica's here, and she, by the way, is very helpful. And I think she probably has another map that we would want to look at.
That's the one.
Yep. What I'm going to show you first is the map from 1972. This map was approved by town meeting, and this is the map I received from Jessica, going back to 1972, looks like March 25, 1972, okay? And this shows the area in question on Highland Avenue, it's right up here. I went on the, the modified, that's the modified, and this is 72. Okay. If you look at the 72 map, do you have the same map?
I have the same map, right here, March 25th, 72.
Actually, that is the newer one, is at the very bottom, you see the modifications?
Oh, 10 to 20.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one.
There you go.
Yep.
That's the one.
So I have it down that we're looking at the March 25th?
1972, unrevised.
It was approved again, you'll see at the very bottom. Looks like 12, 21, and it's hard to read that.
12, 21, 73.
Yeah, 73, I think that's correct, yes. And the area we're looking at is right up here, Zoned GV, general business at the time. Highland Avenue is this dead end road here. Do you see where I'm looking?
Yes.
And you'll see that as customary for your city, you measure from the center line of the road.
Which is marked?
Yep, and you'll see 300 feet from the center line.
See that?
And you'll see that it's a straight line that runs, it looks parallel to the street.
Yep.
And it runs all the way to Highland Avenue.
Yep.
At which point it turns a little bit, to Highland Avenue.
A little bit, yep.
So I would suggest that this demonstrates that at that time, the general business zone was at this location, 300 feet up to Highland Avenue. Now, if we go to the next map, which was modified again in apparently, looks like October 25 of 1983?
Yep. 25, 83.
Okay.
By Jim Grisham.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. So you'll see that, what they did was they took the 72 map, that was modified to 73, and then you can see the revision further on in 19... Is that 1933?
Looks like 73?
73.
331, 73.
Thank you. Now here, what's happened is, there was a change in this area, and it expanded to 800 feet, to a certain distance. And that expansion to 800 feet does not go all the way to Highland Avenue.
Wait.
Okay? And that was a petition by Mr. Gall, because he owns this lane and back, to expand it by 500, by 500 feet. But he did not ask for any change up to Highland Avenue, it stops right there.
Yeah.
But you'll note that it's still, he didn't change the line at Highland Avenue. And I would submit to you that it was still, at that point, a straight line to Highland Avenue, after which it turns downward. So I would say that even as of this date, the general business zone and Highland Avenue is up to 300 feet from the center line. Okay? I then go to the next map, which shows another amendment here in 1990.
What's the actual date of the amendment, May 30?
May 30 and 31, 1990, after annual meeting. Okay? Now, on this map, there was no change to this area. And you'll see that it still shows the 800 feet and the straight line to Highland Avenue. And it turns down at Highland Avenue, it's both closer to the road. Okay? The next rendition is a map that was apparently approved in 1994, and I believe Jessica has that.
Actually, I have the more up-to-date one, which is...
Well, I'd like to look at 94.
I have to go back to the office to get it again.
Or 95.
This is the 95 one.
Okay, well, I'll take the 95. Because it's the same thing.
This is January 18, 1995.
Yes, sure. The map that she had before was 94, and that was revised in 95. 395, you had Article 9, approved by town meeting, and it was January 18, 95, and that article does not discuss specifically what was changed, but I spoke to the person named in the article who moved to amend the thing, and she said they were dealing with New City, which is apparently an area where there were small residential lots, and you had to do some changes down there. There was no change, as I understand it, to the area we're talking about here.
So New City is here, which is in the same district, the R15 district, as Highland Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm saying here is...
Is that they were focused on this, and they were not focused on that.
That's correct. And it still shows, this map still shows the straight line to Highland Avenue, okay? Which, to my mind, demonstrates 300 feet as consistent with the other maps. The case that I supplied for, Brookholmes case in Landport, dealing with a digitized map, involved an alteration to the zoning map. The plaintiff's in that case had a lot that was originally split zone, the line of the zone from business to residential went through the lot, it wasn't along the lines of the lot. And the planning board denied their application to use it in the business section, and they based it on their digitized map. And as it turns out, there was no town meeting addressing the change that was made on the digitized map. And the Landport said, you have to go back to when it was last approved, that is, the specific area. You can't change something like New City and have them change over here and then say it's adopted. It has to be an article that deals with the specific change in the zoning. And your last map that does that, I believe, is the
1990.
1990 map. Whereas, but here, I'm okay with this map, frankly, because this map appears to me to be accurate, as not showing a change there. But I don't know about that jog there, but we're not concerned about that anyway. This is, our concern is the 300 feet. Now... Yeah, I'm not so sure, even here, that it is the same, that that's showing 300 feet. I mean, that, if anything, to me, looks like it's, if you would draw a straight line down, that doesn't look like it's...
I have a scale. If you look at the scale of what it is, it's one inch equals 1,000, not using... This is your measurement, so, use that. I don't know what you're trying to measure, but I'm just giving you a scale so that you've got, you can have an accurate measurement.
So one inch equals 1,000 feet, and if you're going off the center line, then you'd be looking at a third of an inch.
Three ticks on the...
So what I suggest is that if this is different from your prior maps, you have to show that that change was approved by a town meeting where they addressed changing the distance from the center line right here. And I suggest to you that that did not happen. But let's see what we got. It shows May, see here, I'm looking at the inches.
Need on the 10.
There we go.
Yeah, so that's, that's one inch equals 1,000, so then three ticks on there should be 300, but that actually, that red dot is, is 300.
And if you look at that, the center line, am I about at the center line?
Yep, at the center line.
Three ticks is 300 feet.
Yep.
Would you agree?
Yep.
So I'm suggesting that that line did not change, even by this map. In which case, if I could see the new digitized map, you have that question? Thank you. I have a pen here. Look here, Highland Avenue.
I can go to the office and print a close-up of that area, if you'd like, but I won't.
What I'm trying to show here is this lot here, that last lot right there?
Want me to go print that out?
That's eight Highland Avenue?
That thing that I sent you?
Yes. Is 300 feet. 300 feet comes up here, almost to that line, that might fall a few feet short.
We, for the same scale, let's take a...
Same scale, let's see.
It says one inch equals 1,000.
Yes.
Let's take a, let's take a look.
Yep, one inch equals 1,000. I'm going to try to get this on the center line here.
And the ruler is based on a tenth of an inch instead of sixteenths or thirtieths?
Yeah, I mean, it clearly shows that that one property right there would be within the 300 feet.
I think so. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Three ticks would take it...
Which would also level it up to this line as well.
Yep, yeah. So that's, that's our point, and we would like you to consider what I have just shown you, and I appreciate your allowing me the time to show you this. We feel, quite honestly, that we need to get that lot included in the general highway business now, based on the history, showing the lines, and now showing you based on this ruler and this measurement, that we've got a lot there that should be included in our business. And thank you.
Yep, okay, so, go ahead, Counselor.
First of all, hand you all these, this is the current date Highland Avenue, which is what it is own right now, because the assessor says it's own right now, it's R15. It's been R15 through its history, and Mr. Deacon, I believe, owned it. He played in, pushes between where Papa George is in 1948, it's always been, there's a picture of the single family home, it's always been a single family house. And I know Mr. Gall may be surprised, and Mr. Vincent, I don't totally disagree with their argument, but if you read Mr. Vincent's letter, and he sent to, I believe, to the City Council, it says here that, if I can, just give me one second. Hang on one second here. At the time of the purchase, Mr. Gall did not know, or relied on the latest zoning map. And Mr. Gall's a pretty savvy businessman, as we all know, so I'm sure he probably, maybe did or didn't. But he says it here in his own thing, in the words of Mr. Vincent, not all of that lot, not all of eight, if you go 300 feet, is in highway business. That's right, he says, I'm trying to look for the word, latest, it says it substantially in, but not all in, which I guess you said it falls short.
Yeah, I think that's probably...
And my guess, my further question is, if you want to go 300 feet, there's nothing against it, and I think this whole ruling is about digital maps versus
Hand drawn.
Hand drawn maps, and where a zoning goes partially through a lot. There's nothing saying that you have to have it to the borders. I mean, Mr. Gall does A and Rs all the time, hooking his properties together, so it is, a lot of his properties have zoning that goes between. And Mr. Gall had it, in fact, surveyed back in 2015. And if you look at the survey here, which was done by his company, it's about 304 feet, maybe 304 feet to the end of the property, but that doesn't include the road, which in 1936 was listed at over 60 feet. So now you're talking closer to half the lot. So I guess my question is, I have no problem if you put half of it, when Mr. Gall goes to develop, he, you know, uses half that lot, but I don't think he should be given the whole lot. The whole purpose of this is not to give people more, more general features. You know, I have no problem having a complete survey to do 300 feet.
300 feet is all I'm asking for.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, I mean, this may be the first, this may be a first here.
All we want is 300 feet.
Right, would you go about halfway?
Wherever that comes, that's where it is.
Right, that's from the center of the road, by new, because that road's been changed since 1936, when this first map, so I don't know where it'll fall, I'm sure it's going to fall partially in that lot, partially not in that lot. So again, I just don't think we have to go with the whole parcel, I think we could make the whole parcel. We can't go in all parts, because it's more than 300 feet, so I think as long as we go with the 300 feet.
Now, we're in agreement, I haven't asked for the entire lot.
Okay.
300.
Whatever it is, it is.
Okay, so Jessica and I are looking at a close-up of the property. And it's, can we agree that this is lot number 104? Is that the property we're talking about in question?
I'll have to look, it's eight Highland Avenue, I don't know.
It's that, I mean, I think it's the...
It's the first one.
The next one that's not colored, is it?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so that's lot, so from, it looks like the calculations...
For the notes, what are you looking at?
We're looking at a blown-up map of the digital map that was approved by
The digital map?
Approved by the planning board.
Of eight Highland Avenue? Or Highland Avenue?
Of Highland Avenue.
Okay.
And so we're doing, based on the scale, we're getting an exact approximation, which I also have digitally.
Okay, great.
And it seems to show that
I don't mean to step down here, I just want to say...
It looks like, if this is eight Highland Avenue, from the road 60 feet, from 30, 30 feet, that would put it at 300 feet, which puts it just a little over.
Is that the red line there?
This is the red line.
No, I'm trying to see, where are we talking?
This is the property, this is the property line right here. This is what's in the highway business, so that's the highway business, and R15 is, the property line is right here.
So how far is 300 feet though?
To this line.
Oh, okay.
But, hang on a second, on this side, which is half longer. It's longer. And Mr. Gall did a survey from this point, which showed 302 or 304, here's the, here's the survey. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think what you might...
He did 304, and it's not counting the road.
The error is that you gotta go...
You gotta go another 30 feet, so this is going to come in on this side.
You have to go perpendicular from there.
Right. So at a right angle's off North Hampton, that's where you have to go.
Right, but what I'm saying is, on the property, you only get 300 feet on the property line.
You measure from the center line, 300 feet, and if you do a perpendicular line, wherever that falls, that's what we're looking for.
Right, but it's not going to be that whole lot.
I don't, I don't care.
That's all I'm...
And so, and I think, I think if the street we're using is 200 feet, measured for, I mean, it's also going to affect the property on this side of the street, which I think is important to recognize. And, you know, I don't know who lives in this property here, but it would mean that part of their property would be on highway business.
Those were the two individuals that had attended the past two
And they wanted it to be highway business.
And 11 and 17, I would add, correct.
This, well, hold on a minute, because we're talking two people here on this side of the street, so that's...
It would only affect, it would only affect one of them.
I think all it's saying is, it's 300 feet from the center of the road, however the hell you measure it. I mean, that's, you know, that's... 300 feet from the center line of the road, and if you look back here, you know, you're putting in the middle of this 103, but it's not, I mean, by the survey, you're talking, 300 doesn't even get to here, it's going to be about half, it's, you know, somewhere it's 30 feet of the road.
40 feet.
Jessica, here's a question for you.
Well, I had the surveyor digitize it out on her, scoped it out, okay? I'll tell you where it comes. Where's the line here for this?
That's the property line.
That's the property line, okay, comes into here, okay, somewhere there?
Yep.
Okay, and somewhere there, includes a little bit of tent also.
So you're saying it's like an angle?
It's an angle.
Right, it follows this, okay, right angle's to here, this is where it's measured from.
Right. And so, now Jessica, here's a question for you. And so, and now Jessica, here's a question for you. If we, if we told our, the company that we're using to digitize the maps, we said, in this particular area, we want to make sure that we're 300 feet off the center line from the boundary of highway business.
If they're over here, you're gonna come into here.
Yes, they can do whatever they tell them to do.
And that, that was satisfied.
This line here, from the survey, is 302 feet, from, from here to the end of that, to the end of the first property, on Bernie's survey. I'm just saying, so, when I went out and measured it...
But this is, but if you look at the surveyors on this side, it looks like it's 184 for that frontage of that property line, the rear is 216, so I don't know where that 304 comes from.
Well, 304 is, this is two lots.
The two lots.
On this back road.
Oh, I see.
They're saying, they're saying it's 304, that end, to the end of 104 is 304 feet.
76 and 16.
So, so here, let me just, let me just state this, and see if we can, if we're in agreement here. If we, if we have our company, that is doing this digitally, and is gonna be able to do this in the GIS system that's very accurate, if we say to them, we want the edge of highway business on Highland Avenue to go 300 feet from the center line of the 10, is that, are you saying that you're okay with that?
Well, no, I think there's two questions, I think it's, it's both, well, no, I'm just saying it has to be both property lines, because remember, this is already highway business.
Correct.
This is somewhere, some of it's highway business, some of it's residential. But I'm saying, this also butts up, so I mean, I need, I think they have to measure two, one down here 300, and one down here 300, wherever that is.
Only one line, 300.
The only one center line, you have to measure from both.
So I mean, it would, I imagine that they would probably take...
So if you, if you gave him, let me just go through this, if you gave Mr. Gall this, you're giving him more than 300 feet.
You would do this, they would take, they would hold on to the point of the system, and they would drag it, 300 feet, and it would be, it would be, you know, if this is 300 feet, it might be something like that.
It's gonna be a thing from the center, but that's what, I don't know what we've been arguing with.
But that's all we're doing.
But again, I mean, going back...
It's parallel to the center line.
Right, exactly.
No, I understand that. But I didn't want you to think it's all in...
No, no, parallel to the center line.
So, I, I, I mean, I defer to the rest of the committee, and I'm happy to take other input as well, but I, I feel like, if, if we can get an accurate 300-foot measurement from the center line of the road, for these two properties that were in question...
Parallel.
I feel like...
However it is ranked, parallel, that side of the property.
That takes out any interpretation, because we know that 300 feet, I mean, like lines and, and especially the drawn lines, are very subjective, so, this, this changes that to somewhere where we can say, this is 300 feet off the center line, and that's...
It's an objective line, it's measurable, and there should be no...
I mean, from my perspective, when, when, you know, that seems like it makes sense, but I'd be happy to hear.
Well, I'm just curious as to why all the other maps actually show a jag there then? And if it was always 300 feet, why is there, you know, if you look, this is, it should be a completely straight line, but you don't see it, it's, there's a jag. Yeah, so why, I mean, at what point did the council discuss, or determine that there was going to be a jag there, versus a perfectly straight line with 300 feet?
That's a good question, but for our purposes, we're just looking at this lot. There never jags at that lot. If jag's over here, across Highland Avenue, but it never jags here. So we're looking...
With the hand-drawn map, I really can't tell, I mean, if you look at this map here, I...
I don't think those are the proper scales either.
173, I mean, you're looking, I just lost it, right here.
Yeah, this one, this one is straight at 300, see how it's 300 feet right there? And it goes, it doesn't jag until the, the dead center of that Highland Avenue. Um, it's, it jags over on this side, which I imagine maybe is, has something to do with this property line right here. Um, and so...
Before we would ask them to make a straight 300 line, though, I mean...
What about the jag?
Well, like I said, I think it's just this property line.
Well, but it doesn't bring it, I think what he's saying is, it doesn't bring it back necessarily like here, it might turn that slightly like this. You're saying if the jag's on this side, it's not gonna necessarily cut like that, it's gonna cut like this.
I honestly don't know, I'm just looking at three maps here from the 70s that show a jag there, and it's, it's clearly not 300 feet from the center line.
Right. At Highland Avenue and beyond.
Which, I mean...
Just, just to solve this, is there a way just to set that zoning map, I mean, just to say that it's bisect somewhere, that whether you call that lot gray, or you call that lot whatever, that it's 300 feet from the center line, and once, if, if Mr. Gall decides to develop that, and use that parcel, that we would say it's 300 feet from a survey at that point, and, I mean, people can battle it out at that time. But I mean, I don't know why we would try to set some kind of a number here, with all, I mean, with the way the mapping is, and try to put something, because I don't see how you do this without a survey, frankly, I mean, the, the North Hampton Street, when that was, when that map, what was that, from the 30s? The North Hampton, that was 60 feet in the 30s, when this was passed, I don't know what, how big North Hampton Street was at the time. So I mean, you're talking the center line today of North Hampton Street may or may not be, may or may not be 30 feet, I don't know, the sidewalk, it widened it, so I don't know how you can tell what exactly...
It's the right-of-way, it's not just the pavement, it's the entire right-of-way.
The sidewalk, too.
Yeah, it's the right-of-way.
That's right, so I mean, that's all been changed.
But I feel like if we...
The center line would have to be the center line.
That's a 1938 layout.
You can add five feet on the other side.
To 38, 1938 layout.
That's right.
It hasn't changed.
And I, I feel that if we, if we go to 300 feet from the center line and make that consistent, I mean, obviously this is deeper, and it's, and there's a section here that's deeper, um, but, and I believe that, is that, that's 500 feet?
That's five down there.
So, it would still be shallower than the rest of the, of the...
Very much, oh yeah, it's only going that much.
Yeah.
But I mean, what, I'm just saying, if you just have it bisect somewhere in there, and then we can battle it out with a survey later, then it's...
Are we just doing it on Mr. Gall's property, or are you looking to make a straight line?
It would, it would go, it would, it would be straight across, and it would, so this person here, part of their property would fall into highway business.
Part of the...
And, and those, those particular...
Are you talking about eight, or another property?
I think they're talking on the other side of the street, which is, that's not your...
And those, those particular landlords wanted their, their property to be highway business?
They're gonna get small.
So they're gonna have a slip.
Maybe they're gonna slip.
Um, okay, so, does anybody else from the...
I just have a question.
Can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris Hagan. The width of that, of North Hampton Street, the central line could change, because they took part of Catherine Road Park, when they were trying to square up as much as they could. So they took quite a bit of Catherine Road Park to get a legitimate wide sidewalk onto North Hampton Street, on the side of Highland Avenue. So that center line could change, so unless it's surveyed, I don't see how...
I think that's what we're talking about, doing is having a survey.
Well, I imagine that the, the GIS information that they're using is probably the information that's the most up-to-date information, is that...
For the aerial photos, yes, they're the Google, yeah, whatever.
So they would be up-to-date as of today?
Well, they would be up-to-date as the last time it was shot, I don't know when the last time it shot, but there's probably, if you go in...
It's a contemporary map.
It's as contemporary as we're gonna get.
Yeah, okay.
And we're satisfied with 300 feet.
300 feet is fine.
Okay, um, yeah, can you say your name?
Ken Bushy, 43 Highland Avenue. Um, two questions. One is, what is the purpose, slap, the benefit of having a piece of your land, highway business? Highway business versus residential? What, what could I do if my, my land was like that?
It alters the use that can be of, of the pizza property.
So, say it's 100, say it's 30 feet of my 104 lot, left-wise, what can I do with that 30 feet?
Not much, I would, I would defer to Jessica, I think it has to be a certain percentage in order to, to utilize it under the...
Well, typically, I mean, really, I mean, we've got other properties in the highway business district that are split, and they do, they're split differently, where it's highway business in the front, and residential in the back, and they have put commercial uses where it's own highway business, and they could theoretically put residential where it's residential zone, they can't put a highway business use on the residential zone, even if the...
Right.
Part of the properties, it has to actually sort of match what the zone is.
Right, now, if I say I have 200 feet of width, and 40 feet is, or say half of it, now if I want to put a house on one half, I have to have be so many feet from that line of the split?
The setback, no, setback...
I could go right up to the line.
Just back just for the parcel line. If you had, say you had a 40-foot strip of highway business on your parcel, you could sell that 40-foot strip, if you could keep your lot as conforming to somebody else, who might want to utilize it for something else.
Correct, which, if it was a budding other highway business, which it would be.
I mean, parcel lines are arbitrary like any other lines on a map. They're, they're, they're set in terms of legal description, and they're drawn out, so, um, so you can, just because a parcel has lines on it now, doesn't mean that those lines can't change in the future. Anybody can change their lot lines, as long as they're conforming to the zoning business. But...
My second question is, say somebody's, um, running a business, a highway business, business in a residential zone property, what, what is town, what is the town doing now?
So, well, we, we just recently passed a home-based occupation ordinance. Uh, there's two classifications within that ordinance, which is a minor use and a major use. Um, so depending on what that, that business was, it wouldn't be, something, I mean, highway business has its own entitlements of what can happen there, um, but it would have to be done, if it was a major business, it would have to be done under a special permit through the, through the city.
I think at the last meeting, there was something mentioned about a home cleaning business or something, if that's what you're referring to.
That would, that would fall, that would, that would fall under a minor.
Say, say, say somebody's running a big automotive business, repair business out of his property.
That would fall under a major.
Major, so, can that be done in a residential area?
Is that permitted?
As long as, yeah, it's not, it's not prohibited, let's put it that way.
It's not, okay, now, what is the process, these people, this person, say I want to do that, what's, what's the process for you to want me to do that?
We come to my office, we talk to you about what, what you're proposing, we probably sit down with you and say, these are the standards that the zoning board of appeals is gonna ask, these are the questions they're gonna ask regarding what you intend to do in this property. Essentially, a home occupation is to allow people to do, have some economic activity in their house without providing a nuisance to their neighbors, so, you know, no high traffic volumes, no late hours, lighting, those are the types of things.
Noise.
Noise, those are the types of things that the ZPA would ask you as the applicant, about the nature of your business that you're running out of your house. If they feel that you've met all the standards, you would get granted a special permit to do so.
Would there be a hearing?
Yes, there would be a planned hearing.
Neighbors could go?
Yeah, absolutely, but, you know what I'm gonna do, is I'm gonna pull us back on to our subject, which is at hand, if you don't mind, um, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I have one, one other additional question, Jessica.
Yeah.
When the planning board, when we went through and finished, um, with where we decided the lines were gonna fall, um, I, I, I realized that this map has these two properties in, correct? We, it was decided then that those properties were gonna be taken out, is that, was that the consensus? And we were gonna use the property lines, is that what it was?
Well, if you look at the draft map that's on the table, those two properties are not in.
They're not in there.
They're currently not in under the, under the revisions that we've done.
Right.
The revisions that we've done have not been inputted yet into the GIS system until everything's been finalized.
And so if you went straight across from where that line, I mean, so here's, here's that right on there, if you, if you see that, you guys see what I'm seeing? There's...
What are you looking at?
If, if you put a straight line across what the planning board approved, from, so from this property line here, straight across, it includes this property.
You're talking about, like...
So, no, let's see how it's angled, like that, see how the property is angled at that angle?
I'm not, I don't know what...
We want, we want 300.
Too many properties, I don't know.
So, so this property right here, the line of that angle is going in that direction, correct? So if you put the ruler there, it...
You're talking about this right here?
Well, no, because this one doesn't include, it would be right here.
You're talking about dropping the 300-foot line as a right angle?
Yeah.
Right, so it's gonna be something like this.
Yeah, so it does, it does include.
It'll be, it'll be a portion of this one, and it'll be most of that one with a corner of it out.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to say is that if, if we approve this, it's gonna bring it into line with what's across the street currently.
That's what you're asking for, and that's what we would ask them to do.
Okay.
If it's 300 feet.
Unless Mr. Hagan has an opinion on that.
I always have an opinion.
Okay, since we're going property lines, why don't we, 300 feet, and follow it on property line?
No, I think I'm more, I think I'm not...
Bernie, go back Bernie.
There's no sense having this meeting again.
But, you know, I would be more comfortable with 300 feet from the center line, which seems to, seems to be in line with the maps that were approved by town meeting, um, in 70s, 80s, and 90s, or before 95, so...
That's a jag.
But on the other side of the street.
Yeah, but still, it's just one of those things, I'm sorry, we...
I guess this is another one, and this doesn't affect Mr. Gall's side of Highland Avenue, it comes straight on to this side of Highland Avenue. Mr. Gall's side of Highland, I think this is what...
The jag.
Nathan, this is, this is 300 feet, why does it look like that? I mean...
Right, at what point did they discuss it and determine that there needed to be a jag there? I mean, was that strictly...
Because I think it was myself, and again, I provided all that information from 1901 on that side of the street, it was always residential property. I mean, in fairness, Mr. Gall's house has always been residential property, also, I don't, you know, I don't necessarily think when, when they made the 300, it was, again, I don't have a problem with a 300.
Yeah, I mean, everyone's, like, let's, let's just get the kids off the street here for one second, I mean, the reality is, everyone's, they, they drew, I mean, it's hand-drawn maps, they're drawing the line, I mean, this has always been where the business is, is right up front here, right? So, even Mr. Gall, he was part of the highway business district committee, he signed his name to a map that didn't include 104 in the highway business district, so I mean, I don't think anyone's ever thought, and as you look back at the, the assessor's maps maps, everyone's always thought these things are residential properties going back years. I mean, I don't think it was ever, I think they just said approximately 300 feet, because that's about what the businesses were, you know, along the lines. I mean, sometimes they drop it back even further, you know, 500 or back here, but that's never been, we've always had it approx, you know, these businesses are what's, what's in, I mean, that's always been the case, these are always residential properties back here. So to me, to go back now and try to rezone, which as you heard from Mr. Gall's attorney, you can't rezone by the map, you're supposed to just try to follow the map closely and try to figure out what the intention was. I mean, what is the intention here? Is to, to, you know, bisect, you know, these residential properties like this?
Well, I'll stop you there, because I think the intention is clear from these maps on this side of the street, it's crystal clear. On the other side of the street, I think you're right, I think on this side, there, I mean, there's a jog, who knows if the person's pants slipped or whatever, but there's definitely, and I think it's this property line, which is 250 feet from the center line of Highland Ave, which, you know, kind of puts that jog there, but it's, that's on the other side of the street, that's not the property you're talking about.
Well, oh, well, I thought that was part of this map issue too.
No, I mean, from all the maps, it's crystal clear that the left side, this side, it's 300 feet from the center line.
Well, we have agreement.
Absolutely.
Mark it down. And I mark these on the counter with a big circle and a star. Mr. Gall and Mr. Hagan have agreed to something. What is, what is the purpose of putting that in highway? Why do we need to have to think?
I don't think it's, we're not putting it anywhere, I think we're, we're just looking at the sphere of the, of the maps that from, at least that I've seen over the history from 1973 to 1990, which was then, it looks like there was a modification 95, so we're bringing it back into alignment and trying to make the most logical determination of where that line should be.
I just have one more question. This, and again, I'm technologically not up on this stuff like you, you're talking about dropping a GIS here, but I mean, again, and again, Mr. Gall knows, because he develops property, but when he actually goes to develop, which at some point he's going to, I'm sure, I mean, you do have to survey those lines, right? And that's where the 300 feet is going to be, it's going to be from wherever the road, center of the road is. I mean, so, again, I don't mind kind of throwing something here generally, but I mean, it's eventually.
It's going to be 300.
It's going to be 300 feet from the center line of the road on both, on both lines. Because you can't give them more than 300.
Whoever, whoever, whoever's doing the survey is probably going to be using GIS and GPS information within their survey, so it should hopefully all line up.
They'll be shooting it on the ground, they'll be out on the street shooting 300 feet because it's.
Okay, any other thoughts?
So, I guess the only thing, I'm sorry, I'm off Bernie's property now, I'm just on the other side of the street, I wasn't really sure what you said about not dealing with that piece, is that going to stay as the planning board approved it, basically you're saying, leave that alone, how the planning board did?
I think to keep it, to keep it clean and to bring this into 2015 and take it out of, you know, 1910 or whenever one of those maps.
1938.
I think, I think a 300 foot from the center line is probably going to make it the easiest to understand for everybody and not have jogs or, you know, jags in that, which is what the planning board approved for that side of the street.
So what I'll have CAI do is I'll ask them to reshoot from the intersection with Highland Ave, basically all the way to the North Hampton line, with the exception of this part, and just make sure that even these lines are accurate for 300 feet.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
But just to be clear, since 1901, this has been R-15?
They've all been R-15s, far back as you go, I mean, again, you're, and again, I'm not speaking for Mr. Stevens, another constituent of mine, I'm not sure he wants half, again, Mr. Gall's a developer and, and, you know, I don't think Mr. Gall's going to live in that single-family home, he's at some point going to do something with it, maybe put it in, in business or whatever, which is his thing. I'm not sure Mr. Stevens wants a lot that's half in and half out, because that, you know, as we talked about, when you go to put an addition on, if he's got half of it in, in business, I mean, to me, I think that should stay residential, I mean, they were always residential. Again, I know what you're saying, there is definitely a jag there on, on all the maps, it's been consistent on every side, on that side of Highland Ave, where they jagged out for that. I mean, I don't, you know, I understand what you want to do about making it clean, but I'm not sure that's the, that's the proper thing for anybody. You can't give, you know, again, if that was never what it was, I mean.
Have we looked for any other inconsistencies in that, for jogs when we look at the lines for 300 feet?
That's what every, every one of those.
Okay, I mean, I'm looking along the top here, R-35 and stuff, and we've looked at all these, 200, 200 from the center line.
The planning department has spent a considerable amount of time going through and looking at everything, and we highlighted what we believe were all of the issues and concerns that we had identified in our review process.
We went through those circles before, but this would be the only remaining one?
This is the last remaining piece that we have not seen the consensus on.
I don't want to dispute this, but I mean, just to show you how poorly these hand-drawn maps come, this is, one of the other things that was on this map that was approved was Glendale Street, and they had the Glendale Grill, I mean, I'm assuming, again, using common sense, the Glendale Grill's the only thing, that was three and a half lots, the hand-drawn map was three and a half lots.
Somebody did come up to me afterwards and say, you know, there used to be some sort of general store in that location, that.
Well, maybe you're going to go, well, isn't it, I mean, they're not a general business owner. I mean, they're not on the map.
I think we're all trying to do the best we can.
I know, I agree with you, I'm not, I'm not trying to bring that back up, I'm just saying, I think you have to be a little leery of just saying that these hand-drawn maps are.
Yeah, versus a hundred-year-old, you know.
Right, where you go through.
And the assessors are not necessarily correct.
Right, okay.
The official zoning record is the zoning map, not what's on the assessor's.
No, I think it's always on intention though, I mean, it shows only 10, though, but nothing against the map, it's, it's tough to get on a hand-drawn map, but I guess all I'm saying is that shows intention, if you've been paying taxes as an R-15 house for as long as they've been there.
So I'm just going to say, right now, the petitioner of this particular request and the spokes, folks from Highland, it seemed to be in agreement, so I want to, I want to be, I want to stop it right there.
On that side.
I want, I want to say, we're in agreement for this property, which is the only one that we're looking at.
But I believe it goes somewhere during, in the middle of the.
It's not the only property, though, I mean, if we do the 300.
But that's already been, that's already been determined by the planning board, the other, the other side of the street.
So we're going to hit the jag.
But they're not here either. I mean, I'm sorry, but, you know, you've got representation from a large part of the neighborhood, which is great, but the two people that had an issue and didn't get what they petitioned for are not here.
Correct.
And so nobody has asked them, do you mind having a split zone? Maybe they don't mind having a split zone. In my opinion, I'd like to see it clean, I'm kind of with you in saying a 300 clean. And, but, you know, I don't, I don't think it's fair to those two individuals who petitioned and who happen not to be here, I mean, I can, I can play that card too for themselves. But I don't want to, I don't want to draw this out any longer than, than we've done, I mean, this map has been out of date for 20 years.
Right, so Jessica, let me, let me, let me stop you there, let me ask, so I believe that they were at our last meeting, where it was determined that the planning board was going to bring that line, not on these two properties, that was going to basically bring it to the property line.
They, they're, both of their properties are out of the highway business and now are determined.
Right, and they, they had both requested to be in highway business.
Correct.
Okay, so if they had a split property, would it inhibit them from doing anything on their property that a normal homeowner would want to do, like building addition on their house?
They would have to meet the zoning requirements for those, and it, I mean, it would make them pre-existing non-conforming uses, because you're not allowed to have a single-family house in a highway business district right now, the way that the zoning is written. So yes, there may be challenges.
Okay.
Well, but the, the house is already there.
The house is already there, but if they wanted to extend their non-conformity, then they would have to go through the property permitting, if they met the setback requirements, they may be fine, if they don't, then they may end up, because they, they may end up with some additional permitting activities in order to do stuff to their.
They're not here, but speaking for them, they were looking for this.
They were looking for highway, but they did want to be in highway business.
That's what I recall. But not necessarily partial, and in the first meeting, first full council meeting, they wanted to be residential, R-15, and then we tried to clarify that, we still got R-15 from them.
And I don't believe, looking at this, the second property, the Carey property, is going to be in it all, it's just the first property. Mr. Stevens' property is going to be partially in, partially out.
And that's if we decided to go 300 feet all across, if we stayed with the planning board determined, which was at the property line, we brought this, then that beautiful jog would be right back there, it would be the.
For the next?
For the next, however, I mean, I'm not a fan of the jog, but since this is the property, we're lucky enough to find to modify this property.
Okay, so now I need to tell CAI that it's only this that we're dealing with?
Yes.
This stays the way it is, I mean, this actually comes out.
Yeah, it goes, sure. And I, and I think that you're, the concern that you brought up about them being in a pre-existing non-conforming and inhibiting their rights as property owner without their representation here, you know.
It was a public meeting.
Precludes, like, true.
I don't know, but to play devil's advocate, we continue because you wanted everybody here, which I think is fine.
Yeah, we were here.
It's fine, I just think it needs to go both ways, that's all.
Right, I agree. So let's, I would be happy to entertain a motion on this particular property, which is eight Highland Ave. Would anybody like to give that to me?
I would make a motion.
Just before you? Just, just don't. I know from one of my residents here, and as you recall, and I guess we're, we're kind of making, and we don't know where this line is, that we're drawing them, but the Carey's also, that's the second one, remember, this was the funky lot where they broke it in, and that's why I was one of my mates to say they were both R-15, was because they broke those two lots up to give them the proper frontage, and then the total yard, because Mrs. Carey's lot actually goes to the front door of Mr. Stevens' house halfway up his lawn, so again, I, you know, she might get a foot or two in highway business also if you do 300, again, I'm, I'm just throwing that out so that.
Well, I would say 300 to the center line of Highland Ave.
But you're saying, I think you were saying 250 now anyway, or whatever it was, leave it at where the planning board said.
On, on this side of the street? Leave it where the planning board. This side of the street?
No, I don't think they're saying.
Yeah, we're not saying, I'm just saying, just.
I thought we were back, I've been confused here.
Well, I'm sort of with you.
Bernie and I agree, I can say.
You agree.
I confuse.
Look at, there's something wrong with the bar.
I think, I think Jessica brought up a really good point, if we just go 300, then those property owners would be in a partial highway business zone, which could potentially, if they wanted to do something with their house, like build a garage, then they would have to go to the ZDA and get a variance, probably.
Possibly, it all sort of depends.
And, and historically, variances aren't very easy to come by, even though this would be something that would be of our making, at least.
Well, it's a use, it's a use issue, it's not necessarily a, I mean, they would have to meet the setback requirements of whatever the highway business, and I believe, I don't have my zoning book with me, but I think that there's, there's only like one or two-dimensional standards for highway business, it was like a category for all other structures, so, you know, they could meet those setback requirements, what they have is a use issue, so they have a non-conforming use for that, and the way that the zoning is cracked for non-conforming uses is that if you want to change, alter, or extend a non-conform, a pre-existing non-conforming use, then you need to go to the ZDA to do so.
Right, and would, would you have to get a variance for that piece? Or you just have to get their approval?
It's a Section 6 approval, yeah, a special permit.
So, I mean, that's a little less cumbersome, now, but here's a question, which would be, which would be more restrictive, the highway business zone or the residential zone, R-15?
For what, for dimensional standards?
For dimensional standards within.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, because if we're going to free them up to be.
Once I'm here 15 years, I'll know off the top of my head. Off the top of my head, yes.
So, but I think maybe to, to keep this.
If you want to keep it simple, just.
Simple, just deal with this property.
Well, my question again, just to be really concrete, I mean, when I look at this map and I, I see there's all sorts of 300s and 200s, and, I mean, are we, do we have any other split properties in those areas?
Sure, we have tons of split properties.
So we have hundreds of split properties, and again.
Most of them are split where, like, over here on this side, there's properties here that have frontage highway business and in the back is R-15.
Right, right.
There's properties here that are, that are split, that are highway business in the front and R-15 in the back.
That's right, they're my property.
They're split.
But again, my whole thing is, I see a lot of straight lines.
Should I, should I express that?
So, like with the jag, why are we, it seems like we've been piecemealing this, you know, one, one little piece here, one little property here, I thought we had a giant meeting to kind of go through these, and I'm just curious why we would then be not considering just doing a 300 straight, 300 feet and no jog.
That was my original intention. And then.
But I'm just saying, I, looking across the map, I mean, are we, what if somebody else would like a jog on their property, should we not be considering?
No, I'm just, sorry, I just wanted, but I mean, like, as Jessica said before about property lines being very arbitrary, I mean, you know, not to use Mr. Gall as an example or the people across the street, but I mean, you could, if one owner bought two or three of these properties, they could essentially change, you know, they could combine them together as one large parcel, and you're going to have a split anyway, so I mean, the property lines are changing all of the time, so there's no way to ever keep it so that lines are consistent among property for, forever, you know?
So I'm in agreement, and I think Mr. Gall will agree with me, 300 feet, it says on the map, it should be 300 feet and forget the jog here.
If I'm right, for my land, I take the 300 feet.
Right, okay, I'm just saying, beyond Mr. Gall's land, it says 300 feet, why would we consider putting a jog?
Well, only because, like, again, it does cause a little bit of a split zone issue where certain uses, as Jessica pointed out, are not allowed in a highway business district versus a residential district, and so if you go and put in like a swimming pool or something, you could have a problem, you know, I mean, that's, I'm just, again, I don't really, you know, it's not.
Again, we've got the hand-drawn maps versus the other.
So I'm, I just, I just want to see what this looks like, this property, so, okay.
And like I said, I'm looking at all sorts of what must be split zone properties all across the city, based on.
There is a pool next door.
200 feet, 300 feet, it's all over the place.
Yeah, that was, because they considered it, because the assessor considered it R-15.
These are not, these are what's allowed. You've got 200.
So we can go along the zoning for all of these people as an R-15 zone, so right along the sections are R-15, that's what's allowed them to do all of that, so you take that away and now you can't.
Today, we were just saying, before the meeting today, I would want to know whether there are any other pieces in mind we've made in this.
Tell them this is the, wait, 8 is Mr. Gall.
Actually, Dan, maybe if you look this.
That's Mr. Gall. This is 8, so what you're talking, I want your way in, that's the one we talked about where 300 feet. This is the guy here.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me like, it wouldn't go to that house.
It might have been better off.
I mean, I, I don't know, right?
Well, that's, that's the call, there's, well, if you get this property, that's, that's about right, I mean, that square is up the top.
We go next to this, like, airplane.
But he doesn't own that here, it's, it's a parking lot, it's a base, and he stamped his type, which is already.
He agrees, and I'd like to actually stop him, I mean, thank you. He dropped this line back here, okay, he could sell his business zone, land off of this business here, which would facilitate a third piece of property.
Right.
And he would still have enough areas to accommodate his home.
Well, what I'm saying is, if we were 300 feet from, so if this, we determined that it would be 200 feet to this point, it would have all, all reason.
Not at all.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be just the edge of this property.
It's not more than 300 feet.
Okay, so, Nathan, I think we might be going back to your 300 feet, just be, I mean, sometimes it helps to look at, so if you look at the edge of this, you know, if you see the property line between there and you draw it there, it looks like that is, you know, in the middle, it does, it seems like there's a parking lot, it would, it seems like it would be a very small portion of there.
But again, you're going off the, if you're doing it at right angle, so that's not, it's going to be like this, it's going to be on this angle, it's not going to be straight, perpendicular to Highland Avenue, it's going to be.
Oh, right, 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 it's going to be kind of.
So it's going to be, I keep drawing over this line, but it's going to be like that.
Okay.
So if you look at the property, you can see that, like, here's the property line, so this is, that section of 17 would be in highway business, and the majority of this individual is, Steven Stevens at 11, except there's this property that would be out.
Okay.
So the majority of this property would be, the majority of the property would be R-15 with the back area.
Okay, so we would actually be giving this first person what they wanted, which would be, so.
What was the last council decision? Was the last council decision 300 feet from the center line?
It wasn't the council decision, it was the 95 decision, which was to go to this property line.
No, no, sad to hear for that. The original back on the.
It was 1951.
Okay, 1951, like, did they consider 300 feet from the center line?
I mean, we could pull, we could pull the town meeting.
Right, but it seems like that's.
But if that's the argument, if that's what's pretty clear, then hand-drawn maps, jogs, jags, whatever you want.
We'd be gone, okay, so, I think we're, I think we're going to place some clarity.
Can you?
Yeah, let's, so, I think what we're looking at now is, so the last vote was, that was, I believe, that was approved was in 1990, right?
The last map approved was the 90, well, the 95 map, September, or January 18th, 1995, that was adopted at town meeting along with the overhaul of the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So the new zoning ordinance was adopted, and this map was adopted with it.
And so that put it at, on 500 feet on that side, 300 feet on the other side, with no discernible, I mean, there's, this looks to me like those two properties are in highway business, on this one.
Well, but again, that's what, again, what Mr. Gall's attorney pointed out, is there was, all the other maps leading up to this point didn't put it in, and that was for a new city, and that was a new city, I mean, there's no actual zone change that ever shows that going back, that way, I think it's, I mean, based on all the evidence, it's clear it was just a scribbler's error on the map, this has always been 300 feet right here.
Right, and so, so I think, to me, so the property of this question, we all agree Right, and so, so, I think, to me, so, the property of this question, we all agree 300 feet. And I think, again, my original position, I think if we go 300 feet all the way across, it makes things clean. It, it looks to me like it's in, it's in agreement with this 95 map. And so, I'm happy to say, you know, that I would be willing to accept 300 foot from the center line of North Hampton Street for this particular highway business designation.
And could, is that, can you, are you including both sides?
We would include both sides.
Okay.
Yeah. Does anybody want to...
So, you'd like a motion to prove that we amend the maps to include 300 feet for either side of North Hampton Street for the general, general business, is that, or...
Uh, no, no, so, either, either side of highway, from the center of North Hampton Street.
300 feet.
300 feet, yes.
That proves our motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, because we all voted, okay? Motion passes.
Okay. So, you have a hearing on the 4th? Is that what we scheduled it for?
Yes.
Okay, so, let me see, I can get CAI to turn around, Jess, it should be pretty quick, but...
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and giving us, sharing your input, helping us with this. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe we'd like to sample food for us.
Food trucks. Right, so, trucks.
It's like a sliver, it crosses at a diagonal.
So, if you guys are waiting for, um, if you would like to take a look at that, are you here for food? Yeah, we're going to, we're going to take a look at that.
Okay, well, as soon as everybody clears out, we'd be happy to hear your input. Do you want to call a resource?
And so, we still have some stuff on our agenda, so if you guys are not staying for our next items, we're going to ask you to, to have your lively discussions.
If you want to bring those out for a second, sure.
Yep.
I'll bring it right back, we'll be talking.
You know, you just give them, put them in barbers.
I'll bring that in two seconds.
Need some people going to some legally, just want to...
Okay. So, you pull up a chair, join us. So, and, um, we'd be happy to hear any, any input that you have, we just need to have your name and address for the record.
Sure. Stephen, Stephen.
I just want to...
I'm at Five River Valley.
Five River Valley.
Wait.
Okay.
Had a pretty new residence.
Okay.
So, it was interesting watching, because where I came from, I just reclaim where I was in the city, but I was on the Board of Almonds, and served in the Land Use Committee, so...
Oh, there you go.
Right up your alley. For a bad memory.
We had meetings, we'd go, for what?
So, you have particularly interesting...
Yes, so, let me just take a moment, and I apologize at the very beginning, only because I'm not that, well, Steve, in most situations. I was at a, I'm a member of the East Hampton, uh, the youth coalition.
Coalition.
And I had a coalition meeting earlier this morning, someone produced a reproduction of an article that ran in the Gazette, I believe, on the 23rd, something like that, about this issue. So, people were on the table, and, oh, no, I mean, so, we're just catching up. We weren't aware that there was a proposal. One of the council members, I think, says, well, my feelings about this is that I'm glad that there is the, you know, the...
You got the youth coal...
Yeah, basically, and which is, which is fine, but on the other hand, we should probably know a little bit about what is being proposed.
Oh, yeah.
So, the mayor was kind enough to inform me that the subcommittee was meeting tonight, and it was on their agenda, so...
It is on our agenda.
But I haven't even seen the item itself, and I think what we will do is certainly intend to be there on the 4th, which I think you'll all have continued public hearing. But I apologize to myself, and for others who weren't even aware of the first public hearing, or the, or the item itself.
Yeah, do you want me to catch up to speed real quick?
A little bit. Oh, great, thank you, I appreciate that, and, yeah, go ahead.
So, are you familiar with over quota process?
No.
Okay, so, cities and towns in Massachusetts are awarded...
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
And since East Hampton has used all of its licenses, one of the, one of the tools that cities have in the quiver, that Holyoke has used, Hadley's used, North Hampton's used, is to apply for a few of these licenses at a time. So, if a new restaurant wants to come into town, they don't have to spend the potentially up to six months to wait for an over quota legislative license, because it has to pass. Go from, basically, the licensing board to the city council, from the city council to our legislator, which, and then it has to go through the whole legislative process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly. And so, we are trying to be proactive, to try to encourage new businesses, new restaurants, new businesses like Luthiers, I don't know if you're familiar with Luthiers?
Oh, yes.
Things of that nature to, to come into town. So, we're trying, if we have these available, and thinking about coming to open up, thank you, so, opening up a restaurant, or if something that might be beneficial to the community, they won't have to have that one question mark of what if it doesn't come through? So, they can start making investments, and they can be aware from the get-go. So, that's basically what we're...
So, that's the context.
That's the context.
I mean, all, good, I think so, although, again, it's, it's really dependent, I would think, largely on the nature, you're referencing it in terms of restaurants as an example. I think most people would feel, well, that's, that's a good thing, we do want to encourage it, a lot of them would like to have the ability to have at least limited, if not full, licenses, certainly. But, but that also applies to, to licenses for places that have just solely bars and not...
We don't have any of those.
You don't? Is there, okay, that's good.
All our, like, what you would think of as a bar?
Yeah.
Brass Cat, Whiskers, those are restaurant licenses.
They are, okay. And so, I, I think, they're requiring them to offer food?
No.
They're not required to offer food?
That's the license type that they've applied for, which is a restaurant license, which they obviously could offer food, but then they would need to go through the Board of Health for their food permits. But we don't have any bar licenses, we have restaurant licenses, package store licenses, and then, but even our beer and wine, those are all restaurant licenses. The only other thing we have that we've, that, you know, that people have applied for are called general on premises licenses, which is like an event space that East works.
Okay.
So, the, the bar license itself, the bars we have are not bar licenses, they're, they're categorized under restaurant licenses.
Okay, that's the nature of the licenses compared to the nature of the business, of the establishment.
Right.
So, I, so, no, I think that the question that people were pressed is, is for and for. Okay, so what type of establishments, regardless of what license category is, and that's the question.
Well, that, this, oh, go.
Um, I'd like to give my background on the Healthy Coalition and everything, because that's a quote from me, and that came from a conversation I had with...
Just trying to keep it in order, so...
Yeah, oh, no, that's okay, it's already in the paper. I had spoken with Cherry, who is in the Health, and I had just asked her opinion about this and asking, you know, and her response to me was that the bigger concern and focus is teenagers going into stores and leaving with liquor, and the Healthy Youth Coalition feels that the vendors who are, you know, restaurants and bars have been very responsible with their interactions with youth. So, that was the basis of me bringing the Healthy Youth Coalition into it in that meeting, was that, you know, when we look at the larger issue, and the restaurants having a license, to me, as, as a parent, and after talking with someone in that group, this didn't seem to be the same conflict of interest.
And I wouldn't say, hey, but I'm just saying by way of background, it was all new to at least the folks who were at this morning's meeting.
Yeah, please.
And also, what Counselor Smith was saying with the coalition before, the group break before that, that have merged, they have done very positive, what you would call stings, and their whole focus is on educating, so that, so that the licensees all comply with underage drinking, and they have, I, I think, a unique way of doing it versus what used to happen years ago, the ABCC would come in and fine everybody, or, you know, whatever. This is like all based on education, what to check for their, you know, licenses, so I think it's been a very extremely positive experience over the last five, six, seven years, on, on the way they do, do checks, they're basing it more on, they provide gift cards to the ones that have complied versus penalizing ones that don't, on the ones that don't comply, they provide education.
And, and, I think, I mean, I, and my very short tenure of working with the coalition, keep it, the message is always positive, is very important, in my view.
I agree.
You know, given what it's called, it's about, you know, being healthy is being positive. And, and I think the reference actually to the coalition, again, is appreciated.
Yeah, that's...
But I do think that we, you know, ought to be, you know, educated about it, and be, and I think that there would be a difference from what I think everyone's saying as to the specific nature of the institution, even though, okay, in terms of the checking that's been done, as best as I know, we discussed it again this morning, compliance is, I mean, there's a good level of compliance, and the nature which it's done is also positive, so that's good, but there is, there are, there is a difference if this was like, you know, another package store, another bar versus a restaurant.
Right. But I'm just curious, teaching what racing is about. Is the coalition in the business of, you know, weighing in on new bars or new package stores?
I don't think...
I don't think so.
I don't know, no, no, but I think...
I mean, granted, I am, I am part of the North Hampton Healthy Coalition, and I'm a wellness teacher at North Hampton High School. So, I'm just, you know, I'm just, I'm just, well, I'm just thinking about purview, I mean, not that input isn't appreciated, of course, I'm just, you know, as, in an official capacity, I'm just...
Did you have work with the licensing board in trying to, you know, assist them with regulations?
Mm-hmm.
Updating the regulations?
And I'm not suggesting anything about purview or weighing in.
Right.
And, well, it's really to be educated quickly, because like I said, hmm, this is a tough weight, and we ought to at least know about it.
Sure.
Because we're cited, and I, and again, you know, it's about the overall tone, like I said, speaking for myself, there's a, there's a big difference between a restaurant, you know, having that ability to complement their fare of certain things, and, you know, where it's, you know, where it's this whole thing itself, as a, you know, as a, you know, a package store would be, that's what it is, and certainly what a bar not serving food would be. That's about what the total environment of what we're trying to do. Incidentally, there is a, you know, model ordinance that has, apparently, I think it's before the licensing board, right? I don't know how it works, it'll differ from East Hampton, and it might...
Right.
So, there's a model ordinance, I think, is somewhere in the docket, that would be, might be an opportune time to look at that and see how, you know, whether what...
What is, what is, what is the...
So, so, you know, it's just, I guess, an ordinance that has been adopted in various places about, you know, about how, you know, the city would govern the overall picture. I'm not even, to be honest with you, because it hasn't been focused since I've been on, I haven't even looked at it myself, but I do understand that it's, it presumably is kicking around somewhere.
I think, are you referring to the regulations that they've been working on?
Yeah.
Because the ordinance, that's not familiar to me.
They are, um, I thought I heard it referred to as an ordinance, but don't hold me to that. It's a regulatory, you know, it's a scheme of regulation, one way or another, whether it's called an ordinance.
Through the licensing board, regulation.
And I think it's there.
And, you know, a totally different version too of what happens when you don't have enough licenses, all, all restaurants are able to bring their own.
Right.
Which is not easy to regulate, it is, you know, not normally, the recipe there is, and it does usually not sound loud. That's, that's just state law, there's no regulations against that. So, when, you know, when you have somebody that might want to open up a restaurant, and there are none available, they can go bring your own.
I see.
You know, there's regulations on what you can do on that, but it's not, it's, you know, not...
So, then, then there's no carding?
Yeah, yeah, well, actually, interesting, I think, I could be wrong, I don't think we allow...
And then they open the home, yes?
Yeah.
Ah, you'd say it's a, we may have ordinance to set up.
Thankfully, we don't, we don't have to, because our establishments that, you know, pour alcohol for restaurants and eateries have them.
And so, just, so, um, so I've been, since I've been on the council, we've done a handful of these over quotas, so, so maybe...
Six?
Yeah, six, a handful plus one.
Yeah.
So, you know, Galaxy, the Art Bar, Hideaway, Platinum Pony, we did one, what's that? Yeah, Hideaway.
Right, Hideaway.
Um, there's a new place on, on, it's called Smokey, I don't know if it's...
Smokey Bear?
Smokey Bears, I don't know if it's done yet, but, he's had, he had one...
It was a barbecue?
It's barbecue, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lock Cabin?
Uh, Lock Cabin, and, because they're partially in East Hampton, so, so, I, I think, you know, as we look towards our economic development, those are, those are similar to what we foresee, and we, and we specifically in the ordinance targeted into areas within East Hampton that we want to see developed economically, like the, the mills, and Union Street and downtown business, so...
I'd like to see another factor too, one of the, one of the things that really motivated me to consider this too, is when you look at it from a youth perspective, and the amount of restaurants within East Hampton that families actually go to as a whole, I've seen so much informal talk on the parent boards, that they would really like to see more restaurants coming into East Hampton, and have places for families to go, and to have restaurants moving into town without that dynamic of having, you know, any sort of liquor license available to them, historically have not been as successful in drawing in a lot of business and groups of families, so, that was also part of my rationale.
Oh, I'm sure a lot of places...
And, and we get calls all the time, do you have any available licenses?
Yeah.
And at one time, as, as we're derby explained, you know, for people going through the legislative change, a year was not exorbitant.
No.
And that's a long time, too, you, you're just not going to bother opening your business and, and waiting a year, and for something that you don't, aren't sure is going to happen. And, and even just a small example too, is La Casita, La Casita.
Azteca.
Now, they're a Mexican restaurant, they would love to serve margaritas, of course they would, but they can't, because they only have a beer and wine, or beer and malt, whatever, wine and malt, wine and malt, but I call it beer and wine, so they can't serve margaritas there, because they don't have an alcohol license, and they've wanted one for many years. And the process is, is, you know, it's quick on our end, but not quick at the legislative end.
Yeah, no, it's certainly, it's certainly understandable, it's a question about, I mean, now, it's, for a lot of places, they make, you know, they need it, they, you know, open a line, so...
Absolutely.
So, I just, I, that's why I apologize for my first name, because I was starting not with a lot of information, and just thought we'd take the opportunity, and I'm very thankful for the mayor at least to queue me in, so I can run over tonight, so I'll run over and find out more about it, and let people discuss it, so that, you know, it can be intelligently discussed, that there are many people wanting to do it, but...
Perfect.
Last question then, is that, no, I think the article also mentioned that the three microbreweries also would probably be among the ones seeking...
I would doubt it.
This one person's opinion.
One, one person said that, and, and I would, I would strongly counter that opinion.
I'm in all three, I don't think so either.
They would, they would, they want to sell their product.
There, there used to be a lot of strong regulations against selling someone else's product, too, for breweries.
Right, yeah, and they're, all the breweries have a special type of license, it's a farmer brewer license, and, and so, I know, and I would say, like I said earlier, I wouldn't speak for Fort Hill, but I really doubt that they would go for that, considering how much they're dealing with right now.
Yeah, they go...
And, and I, and I don't think New City or Abandon, unless they started getting into, you know, brewing their own bourbon or something, would go for it either. I think that would just be a significant investment above and beyond what they're already like, I imagine they're all trying to maybe turn a profit, it's, I mean, at some point soon.
Seems counter to the vision.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if it went through, how, how would a determination be made about how all those might be interested?
Uh, they would be licensing boards.
It's just...
And, and then, so, priority, strong priority would be given to mill industrial, downtown business, with, and, the spirit is, we, we asked Union Street to be a point of emphasis, because Union is kind of a little bit of a muted zone between Cottage and Main, we'd like to see some sort of connection.
No, it's...
And, and obviously, the mills that we're, you know, we're trying to bring back to life, these, these mills, so, that would all be done by the licensing board, so that determination...
So, it's location, in part, it would be typed, for instance, package store versus restaurant?
Um, well, a, a package, legislative licenses aren't applicable to package stores.
So, these aren't, you're not talking about them?
No, that's a special type of liquor license that is not over quota.
Okay, so that wasn't clear, again, we were just working off the article, it wasn't clear about the...
Yeah.
Purview, the range here.
Yeah.
So, that's all, so we're really just talking about teen drinking establishments, right?
Um, or, 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 you know, places like Luthiers.
Places where you can drink on the premises.
Where you can drink on the premises.
Yeah.
Right, so, which is not a restaurant.
No.
But it's, or, you know, for example, if someone wanted to put in, like, I don't know if you're familiar with Quarters in Hadley? It's an arcade, they have old arcade games from the eighties and they, they serve, and so someone wanted to put an arcade that, you know, in one of the old mills and be able to serve, you know, or, or a pool hall, something like that, then that would be permitted.
Of course, pause even, where they want to serve champagne, you know?
Oh, okay, not again.
Yeah.
I'm working up the arcade, I think of younger kids.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's, uh, younger kids don't want to play those old ladies games.
The actual machine games.
You'll have, you'll have to go to Quarters.
Apparently I have to do that and I have to stop dating myself. All right, well, listen, thank you, I appreciate you helping out and, although, no, I haven't been listening, but the, if you're, if you're moving into food trucks, for like two minutes, but that, like I said, that's, that's something we went crazy about.
Yeah, um...
The balance between...
Well, we have, right now, we don't have any ordinance around food trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and so we have, basically, tonight was just information for the rest of the committee to review these, um, ordinances from, you know, we have a half dozen from other cities that have instituted ordinances. Right now, it's all through the Health Department and the health agent didn't come tonight, smart her. She would have had to wait here for a while.
She has to license each one, correct?
She does, she does.
That's the thing with the food truck, if you want to go to ten different panels or cities, you have to be licensed.
Each one.
Be in each one.
As you should be.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna look at that process and...
By the Board of Health?
By the Board of Health.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, but there's that balance between, you know, the brick and mortar folks and...
Yeah, yeah, well, there's gonna be certain areas that I think are gonna be highly conducive to food trucks.
Absolutely.
So, um, you know, I think we might have like, I don't know, we might look at target areas or...
Well, I mean, I'm all for the food trucks, I'm just saying that right now.
So, one day now.
That would be great, actually, I haven't had dinner yet.
Yeah.
If we could get one back here. But, well, I definitely want to take a longer look at some of the language around the food trucks, but, you know, the sooner we can, you know, consider that and make it permissible in, in specific areas, I served before that. But getting back to the, uh, the liquor licenses, I just was wondering regarding the language on the public hearing, whether or not we're looking to put a new, or, you know, I mean, we left the public hearing open, it's just more of the process around, it sounded like some councillors were willing to amend the language once, let's say, we were going to propose the motion, then it would be amended through the city council process, but it was sent back to us for this evening.
So we can amend it here and then people can decide whether they want to do any further amendments.
Okay.
Yeah.
But also, to my understanding, excuse me, from last Wednesday is that they were kind of requesting that we leave, uh, left it open for more public input tonight or potentially at the next council meeting. So I'm not hearing too much other input for tonight's purposes.
Well, I wanted you to be able to ask all your, your questions first, because, you know, I know who over here...
Just to have this in hand is, is helpful.
Yes.
So, I have questions, you know, just pertaining to the licensing board end of it. You know, I, I just, I guess I just wanted to ask, you know, to make it, um, I think easier on their end, so, you know, once these are approved and, you know, I, I read the, um, the public hearing language on it and I, and I know about the highly advantageous for, but would you have some type of a guideline for, and again, this is, say, you know, this for example, the, decided to do for all alcohol and whatever, six and two or four and four, then that's voted on. Then people come to, at that point in time, it, it becomes the licensing, the application goes to the licensing board. So, would there be some type of, uh, more of a guideline for them to know, okay, so obviously, without a doubt, if somebody wanted a, um, Union Street would be most advantageous right, you know, right now, well, under the, under the guidelines, but how long, what if they, uh, you know, eight applications and none of them were Union Street? Should they wait a period of time? You know, I mean, you, you wouldn't want to miss the vote on that and, or what if they didn't get any and it's been a year now, not that that's going to happen, but what if they didn't get any applications and it's been a year now and somebody on, I even hate to say highway business?
Captain Jacks, I wouldn't hate to say that.
You know what I mean? I mean, I don't want to just bring up, uh, but somebody wanted a, a restaurant there or Captain Jacks, who I would think he probably would, he already has a restaurant there. So, what would they say, in other words, say just Captain Jacks applied?
Yeah.
And it's like, well, you know, um, you know, we're hoping that, you know, you know, to build out the mills and Union Street, but how long do we wait to see if somebody comes to come around?
I don't think that's really up to us, I really think that's up to the licensing.
So it would be if you had those, like, two or three in front of you, that would rate the top because it's okay.
Exactly, so, and that was the example that we gave, I think it was to Jason Duda, because that, I think that question was asked at the first part of the public hearing and our response was, well, if there was, um, you know, three applications, two of them were in the catch zones and one wasn't the priority, would go to the two in the catch zones.
Right.
Um, and if there wasn't one left, then that, you know, the, the licensing commission could make that decision, you know, at their discretion.
So first come, first served?
First come, first served.
I mean, and I could say, hey, let's, let's hold on to these for at least a year in case somebody does build out on Union, okay.
And, and...
So as they come to them?
We're at kind of a conundrum with that because the legislative license, there's very specific language that needs to be within that piece and we can't, it would be very difficult for us to write an ordinance directing the, the licensing commission.
Exactly.
So, what they're gonna have to do is they're gonna have to rely on what our intent and spirit is. And so, you know, through the minutes and, and through, um, hopefully the public hearing and what gets out there, you know, our priority would be the mills, Union Street and, um, areas that would be enhanced by having some sort of new business.
And then I just have one more question on the very end of it. Now, I know our legislative licenses, um, at one time, they weren't transferable. And I know it now, you can transfer it, but it stays there. So, my question was related to the very end of that language where, say, um, say I opened up a, say I wanted to open a small little restaurant on Union Street, so I, I'm luckily enough to obtain a license. And then I close it down, I'm done, I'm, you know, no one, I don't transfer it to anybody, I don't want it anymore and somebody comes along and makes a barber shop out of it and obviously has no intent of ever, of ever using that license on that location, couldn't that go back to the city to be used again?
At a, I think it would be great if you could do that.
Because it's totally gone?
Is it totally, I think...
You know, the premises are gone, it's, it's no longer exists as a restaurant or an alcohol establishment?
I think the way the legislature operates, we would lose that and we would have to go for another over quota.
Okay, so their kind...
I would encourage that barber to serve beer and wine.
What did he say?
I said I would encourage that barber to...
I was thinking the same thing, they're fifteen, twenty minute late.
Would they even take a number at that point?
So I think, I think...
I don't know what you're standing on.
Okay, so they, so no matter what, even though the use would, you know, be...
Would be totally changed, I don't think it would be...
Right, so it stays there or it just kind of really goes away?
So like even if Small Oven said, said, hey, Small Oven wanted to get a beer and wine and then they decided that they're too, they've outgrown their space and they go to a different space?
Yep.
They wouldn't be able to bring it with them, but they could apply for another one.
Right.
And so if someone wanted to move in to that Small Oven space and have something, you know, with, with beer, then they could re, those people could reapply. But if it was, if the cleaners...
Right, that's, that, you know, that was my concern, it's like the cleaners moves in there and they, they don't want it.
They don't want it.
And we can't grasp it back to be used, you know, for the intent.
The legislature, because that, what that does is becomes too much like a quota license, it can be transferred.
Right, right.
Well, I just, about that, colleague of mine in Hartford does go to get his haircut at an old barber shop and they do have beer and wine.
No way. That's awesome. Oh my goodness.
Thank you.
Okay, hey, thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Outside of the box.
Outside, yeah. So, since we're on this, do you guys want to, um, go back to the idea around ratio? Do, do we want, do you want to split the difference?
Sorry.
Do we want to go five and three?
I'm, I'm for it, I just, okay.
You're for the six and two?
I'm for four and four. I mean, it's just one of those things of, I am completely flexible, I can understand the thinking in six and four, or six and two, five and three, four and four, uh, like I said, it's, yeah, if we kept it with four and four and three upgraded, then we would have one full restaurant license and I'm gonna call all the others, we would potentially have seven creative licenses, you know? Pool hall, I think that's a fabulous idea.
Yeah.
So... How long do I have to be off the council before I...
But it just seems, it, it seems to me that I'm not seeing the justification to turn it to six and two. If anything, I think that would create a real feeling of unfairness for people who've got the beer and, um, wine and didn't get the other one. And I think having a more even split just assumes more equity from the beginning about...
I'm just playing devil's advocate here, but if we want all eight full licenses?
Then, I, I don't think that would be, I mean...
The reason I'm saying...
Is there a difference in the cost of licenses?
Well, well, no, because we, we, oh, wait, hold on. Uh, yes, there is. The city charges thirteen hundred.
There are no taker, I'm like, so too?
Thirteen, thirteen for a full and eight seventy-five for a beer and wine.
Did they kind of change those fees in a long time? But I can tell you that the all alcohol are the ones that people are looking for.
And that's why, sort of being devil's advocate here, I mean, that's what people are looking for, we go all eight, anybody who currently has a wine and malt license can upgrade.
And then those would come back and we'd have those available.
And then we'd have wine and malt.
I think that's actually kind of an interesting...
And you're not putting language in there as good most advantageous for people that are not having one.
Just not having one.
Okay, because potentially you could have all right, if the wine and malt restaurants want the all alcohol and, you know...
They'd be fighting for them.
Right, so...
So, yeah, you have a good proposal.
Okay, because they are, like, that's what everybody calls us for.
Yeah, hey, guys, I think eight might be actually not a bad idea.
Eight for four?
Because, what Karen was saying is that, you know, there's, since there's five beer and wine, they might, all five of them might want to do that upgrade.
Then we would still have three in the bank and...
Still have three in the bank and we'd have, we'd have those beer and wines built.
And if somebody didn't, if they wanted a full hall without, without full alcohol and just beer and wine, we'll let them have it.
Then that's what they could do?
I'm making a motion to amend the recommendation for four and four to eight full alcohol restaurant licenses.
Do I have a second?
I need some more discussion on this.
Well, if you second it, we can still discuss it.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
I'm just imagining going back to the full city council and trying to justify why we're saying eight and zero.
Because they asked us.
And I just, I just want to hear it rearticulated.
They asked us to change the, the proposal and we're making the change of proposal. And again, it's what they're looking for, it's what the restaurants, it's what's the businesses, if I was out there right now and I wanted to open a restaurant in East Hampton, I would not want a beer and wine license, I would want a full alcohol license. Because again, my burger business might do better with bourbon than...
And, and I would say that this is, you know, the, the mayor recommended this.
That's...
I'm not getting that, I'm gonna go back to full council, what are we trying to say?
She took a word in my mouth.
So, oh, I think, um, can, can you withdraw your second for, would you be willing to withdraw your second?
Why?
Because Nelson wants to say something.
Oh, yes, I would be willing to withdraw.
Okay, Melissa?
You've never had an application for an over quota beer and wine, they've always been for full alcohol.
That's a good point.
All right, that's what I'm looking for, like, what's the precedent that would make this a logical decision and...
We actually have, uh...
You have?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, no, 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 because those were seized, what we, what we used to have is, because there, there weren't on, people would go with the seasonal because there is no limit on the seas, on the amount of seasonals you can give out.
Yeah.
It's just the time limit that's limited, you can't serve from April fifteenth to, excuse me, from January fifteenth to April first. So, we had people that, we didn't have licenses, so they went and got, they went and obtained the seasonals because they wanted one right away and then those were the ones that, um, were legislatively changed, like the Hideaway and Platinum Pony.
But when they did, they went for full alcohol.
They went for full.
They never asked for only beer and wine.
Well, they actually were instructed by the licensing board to go for the...
For the full?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So based off of the finance director's and the mayor's input, I'm recommending no fewer than twelve full...
Well, that's what happens for it.
Well, that's what happens when there's no food truck.
Well, what I, what I would argue from tonight's meeting, and I concur with this, just to say that from the beginning, is that, um, that's a negligible amount, thirteen thirteen versus eight seventy-five, and that's, yeah, five hundred dollars, but that's not the same as thousands of dollars, so we're not making it, I, my concern would be that it would be appearing that we were trying to limit certain establishments from doing, from coming in, and I don't see that with that language, so...
Exactly, and, and also, if, if any of those people did upgrade, those beer and wines would become available, because those are transferable. So, and those could be at the eight seventy-five level.
And given that most license, if, if what I just heard, everyone who comes in is looking to apply for a full license, they just happen to take the other one when they're not there, that if we're looking at what businesses coming into the city are looking for, this meets the needs of actually a growing economy more.
And also, exactly what you're saying, um, Tamara, the, the trend is when one becomes available, the wine and license, the wine and malt holders immediately apply for it.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it is, and they have switched, that you, there's a number of them that have moved up.
But again, I think what we really need to consider is that there are businesses out there who may be choosing other communities to establish themselves in because there's available licenses and while we don't have them, they're not willing to wait six months to a year to say, well, will I get the over quota, should I start, you know, looking for retail or looking for space here in East Hampton? By having the bank of them, potentially a full eight or, you know, whatever's left after there's upgrades, we make ourselves more desirable for, for new businesses coming in, which is what we heard the community's looking for.
And I just have one more question. In the past, um, we've had, at the licensing board hearings, we've had, um, not many, but sometimes, um, maybe two, maybe three at the most, license holders come and not be happy with this. Have, has anybody, have you heard from any of the license, the licensees at all?
No, I mean, so, I know that, like...
I know you've had, you know, several meetings, and the public hearing.
And the public hearing.
So maybe...
And, you know, back then, I remember the, the first one that I did, Casey had just, he had just bought his Apollo's license and he had spent a decent amount of money on it, and then the Art Bar wanted an over quota and then, and so he was miffed. But then, he came back and got one for Galaxy.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, he's not, he's not upset about it anymore.
And then after that, he's supported, I think, Ritz and the Platinum Pony.
He did, he did.
Saying that, I was against it, but then I got one, so now I'm, you know...
Yeah, so that, that kind of changed the, the dynamic, I think, of, and I think the other license holders feel comfortable in the fact that their license, um, can be transferred if they so choose to do that, which has, um, a, a significant difference from an over quota, which loses its value if, if that business ceases to exist at that location.
And we're not, there is no charge on these, these are exactly like the other legislative licenses.
Exactly, the only charge is the licensing fee.
Exactly, so, but I, I know that, um, I, I know off the top of my head, well, you remembered Casey, but I also remembered Whiskers and I remembered Brass Cat, um, those licensees, I can't remember if there are any others, but felt that that devalues their license.
We haven't heard from them.
But theirs, and I think too, for theirs, for the ones that have the annual licenses versus the legislative, those are actually an asset, whereas these, I don't...